Hello everyone and welcome to the Castor Valley Unified School District Board meeting. We are calling the meeting to order. Do I have approval of the agenda?
I will move approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes 4-0. Is there any public comment on any of the closed session items? There is not. Therefore, we will recess to close session and return at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much and see you soon.
Hello and good evening everyone and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School Board meeting. We are reconvening to open session and we did not take any action and closed session. Trustee Adams, will you please read our district mission statement?
Sure. "We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents."
Thank you, Trustee Adams. Now we will read our public comment instructions, please bear with me, they are quite extensive. "The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented." Now we are so lucky to have Independent Elementary with us tonight, but Principal Patrick Hanson-Smith is almost here. So, oh, he's... do we see him? There he is! Let's give him a round of applause! Perfect timing! Welcome!
Sorry about that. Every single light. Okay, what am I doing? Okay, hi, I'm here. So, tonight, Independent Elementary, we're going to be presenting on what people call the specials classes in school. But before we get into that, I want to start this board presentation like I do all independent board presentations, with a reminder of what our mission and vision is. And rather than reading it, I bolded the really key aspects. "We're striving to create students who are emotionally literate, intellectually curious, academically capable, and socially conscious problem solvers." And one of the ways that we do that is by focusing or by providing them with a well-rounded education, a whole child education that has science, music, art, physical education. And so today, we're going to talk a little bit about that. I've got a whole bunch of really cool quotes on here that you can read whenever you want to. They're very inspirational. One of them is in my email. If you can pick that out. So, at the elementary level, we have four different specials. We have lab science, which fourth and fifth graders get 50 minutes every week. We have physical education, first through fifth grade, getting 100 minutes every week. And then our newly expanded visual art and music classes, where all first through fifth graders get 50 minutes of music and art. And fifth graders also get an additional 40 minutes of performance classes. But you hear me talk way too much, so I am going to ask some of Independent's teachers to come up here and give you a little bit of detail into the programs. So first up, we have Ms. Lauren Biachi.
Hi. Thanks for having me. I'm Lauren Biachi. I'm a fourth and fifth grade science specialist. And with my partner teachers Lynn Foykoush and Sarah Tapolli, and we serve all nine elementary schools. Do I get control of the slides here? Awesome. So, our goal for our science specialist program is to create a district-wide, hands-on, next-generation, science-standard-aligned program that fosters excitement and curiosity.
Hello and good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School Board Meeting. We are reconvening to open session, and we did not take any action and closed session. Trustee Adams, will you please read our district mission statement?
Sure. "We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents."
Thank you, Trustee Adams. Now I will read our public comment instructions. Please bear with me, they are quite extensive. "The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form via the Google form and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to thirty minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented." Now, we are so lucky to have Independent with us tonight, but Principal Patrick Hanson-Smith is almost here. So, oh, he's... Do we see him? There he is! Let's give him a round of applause! Perfect timing! Welcome!
Sorry about that. Every single light. Okay, what am I doing? Okay, hi, I'm here. So, tonight, Independent Elementary, we're going to be presenting on what people call the specials classes in school. But before we get into that, I want to start every... or this board presentation like I do all Independent Board presentations with a reminder of what our mission and vision is, and rather than reading it, I bolded the really key aspects. We're striving to create students who are emotionally literate, intellectually curious, academically capable, and socially conscious problem solvers. And one of the ways that we do that is by focusing or by providing them with a well-rounded education, a whole child education that has science, music, art, physical education. And so today, we're going to talk a little bit about that. I've got a whole bunch of really cool quotes on here that you can read whenever you want to. They're very inspirational. One of them's in my email, if you can pick that out. So at the elementary level, we have four different specials. We have lab science, which fourth and fifth graders get fifty minutes every week. We have physical education, first through fifth grade, getting a hundred minutes every week. And then our newly expanded visual art and music classes, where all first through fifth graders get fifty minutes of music, or sorry, forty minutes of music and art, and fifth graders also get an additional forty minutes of performance classes. But you hear me talk way too much, so I am going to ask some of Independence' teachers to come up here and give you a little bit of detail into the programs. So first up, we have Ms. Lauren Baachi.
Hi! Thanks for having me. I'm Lauren Baachi. I'm a fourth and fifth grade science specialist. And with my partner teachers Lynn Foycoush and Sarah Tapolli, and we serve all nine elementary schools. Do I get control of the slides here? So, our goal for our science specialist program is to create a district-wide, hands-on, next-generation, science-standard-aligned program that fosters excitement and curiosity through observation of real-world phenomena, our natural occurrences. And the way that we do that is we get a fifty-minute lesson for every fourth and fifth grader, and including push-in of SDC students. We try to provide equitable access to phenomenon, so we present phenomenon in a variety of ways, whether that be data collection, making sense of models, demonstrations, or just direct observation of phenomenon. We always incorporate hands-on lessons, so kids get that lab experience with real science materials. They especially like wearing safety goggles. And we always try to incorporate critical thinking skills like engaging in argument from evidence, making sense of models, and data analysis according to the new standards. They're always doing problem-solving, and they always do group work, so they're really engaging in collaboration skills with their peers, how to work together, how to solve problems. We support and enhance the district's adopted TCI curriculum, so we don't teach that curriculum, but our lessons support it. We've created a scope and sequence that is aligned with their program and highlighted essential lessons for the fourth and fifth grade teachers. And to give you a taste, here's some pictures of some labs that we do. The top left is a fourth-grade activity. It's a rubber band car, and they have to figure out how many twists of the rubber band to get in the blue tape zone. So that's a popular one. The middle one on top is an engineering task where they have to build a structure with an earthquake table and make it withstand an earthquake. We do some chemistry lessons on the top right. That's acid-base lesson. We do an eight-week terrarium lab on the bottom left, where they plant seeds and watch plants grow, and even add some critters to their terrarium. They observe the life cycle of the mealworm, from larva to pupa to beetle, which some of them freak out about. And then the middle bottom one is a sound station lab. They're trying to use their voices and sound waves to move salt. And then the last one on the bottom is an engineering task. It's a California aqueduct model where they have to build a seven-track California aqueduct to get water to flow. So, that's our program. Thank you.
And next, we've got Coach Stu to talk about physical education.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about PE, and the kids call me Coach Stu. And so, our goals is... Our goal is multifaceted. We really want to cultivate joyful learners who are excited. And of course, kids, most of them are super excited about PE. They come out really just gung-ho, ready to play. But not all of them have that same level of enthusiasm, so another part of our goal is to really develop a healthy self-concept so that they feel as if they're included, that whatever their body size or type or skill size, they have something to contribute, and we want them to develop that sense of confidence through our instruction. We also want them to appreciate, engage in diverse games and activities. So if some of them major in just one particular game with soccer, we want them to understand that there's a reason why they should be willing to try other games from other cultures and maybe games that they're not so excited about. So, that's something we want to... That's one of our goals. We want them to effectively balance competition and cooperation. And so, we really work with them on how to regulate big emotions, how to not, you know, become so braggy and boasty. So, we do a lot of processing after the game, and also a lot of setting expectations before the game, and think about ways that we can make games non-competitive, things like that. We want kids to be spatially aware, agile in their movements, and strategic in their gamesmanship and game sense. So just being able to move with a good sense of dexterity. We want them to be wholly invested in the dynamics of teamwork to achieve a goal. So we want them to really understand the importance of teamwork. And then finally, the big goal, we want them to embrace a lifelong commitment to being active, adventurous, and playful. All right? And so, that is our goal. So how do we go about it? Well, I would say that we try not to be so drill-drill-game-focused. So, it's not like learn a skill through drill-drill, and eventually learn a game. Instead, we try to really see where our kids are at, assess and identify where they're at. And based on that, we'll develop stimulating activities and really focus on the power of making mistakes, falling forward, on the power of not yet, and saying, "Hey, you may not be good at it this moment, but no one really got that great at it overnight." And so, we want to encourage them to do that. And we do that through having conditioned games. And so, rather than just drill-drill-drill, we want them to construct, use what they already have, the skill sets they've already learned, and sort of explore how to build upon those skills in the games that we play, and then reflect on that. And so, how did that work for you? What did you do that was successful, or how would you do that differently? And in listening to their peers, they think, they're like, "Oh, wait, I could have, you know, we could have played that a little differently, or I could have tried that skill." And so, it's really a constructivist sort of mindset about how we work with them, is getting them to reflect on their practice, sort of, and build knowledge that way. All right? And I think that ultimately helps them become lifelong learners, have independence, autonomy, curiosity, and be actively engaged in PE. So here, we have a couple of photos. The one on the far left shows some second graders, and we did a dance unit. And they, at the end of the dance, I asked them to come up with their own finishing pose. And so, here, they were all very creative about their pose. The top one shows our beautiful skyline at Independent, which is awesome. But it also shows that there's roles and responsibilities, and so some are defending the hula hoops, some are throwing to knock the other team, so everyone has a chance to be engaged. The one in the middle, Marilla, the girl with blonde hair, she's got a deck of cards. And there, we did some cross-curricular stuff with math, and so they're counting the cards. And then the final one is what we talked about, playing diverse games. So they're just kind of working on their locomotor skills with flags. And so, a lot of them, like, they won't play, you know, throwing the ball, but this game kind of focuses on the fine motor skills of hand-eye coordination. So that's PE in a nutshell, and you're so welcome to come out and join us. They love it when the kids come out and play, I mean, when adults come out and play. So come out and join us. Thank you for your time.
Next, we've got the sparkling Ms. Chloe Billings.
Hello, my name's Chloe Billings, and I am one of the many music teachers at the elementary level. I currently teach grades one through five all the way through, and there's five of us. A few of us also teach at the secondary level as well, so I also teach the sixth-grade Creekside Choir. So... So, we actually have a music, district-wide music statement. We really love that our music program is a full district program, and we connect on those levels a lot. So I just have our district mission statement up on the screen. And kind of to summarize, we're really focused on building high-quality and culturally responsive education through music. We want to build lifelong musicians and also learners in music. We really want to, not only at the elementary level, but later on in the secondary as well, but mostly in elementary. We like to expose students to different cultures through music, and also connect different cultures and classmates together through music. And so, how we reach our goals. So we have, as you know, kind of a new expansion to music this year. So I kind of went into each grade to show you kind of what it looks like now. Previously, we had just a fourth and fifth-grade music program. We had choir, and then we had a strings and orchestra and band. And then we also had a recorder program as well. But now, we go all the way down to first grade. So first and second grade receive forty-minute lessons, and this is switched off with visual art. And in this class, it's been really exciting. We've gotten into kind of the basics of singing and active listening, which are very key for the first-grade level. We've been learning a lot of folk songs from around the world and kind of exploring with our voices, getting used to singing, getting used to listening to music, and moving to music, things like that. Recently, we've been, it's the beginning of the year, but we've been learning a lot of songs. One of their class favorites is a song from Morocco called "Ram Sam Sam," a very famous children's song. So we've been loving that. At the second-grade level, it's pretty similar because it's our first year in the program. A lot of basics of singing, active listening, folk songs. We've actually been learning a song this week called "La Mariposa." It's a song about a butterfly, Mexican folk song. And that's been really fun. They get to make hot chocolate and give it to their neighbor, and it's been just this great excitement, of course. And then third grade has started a program, learning music through the recorder. And this has been really exciting. They've been really excited. They want to take them home and practice every day. They're so excited. So they've been learning a lot about basic music notation. So we've introduced kind of the basic notes and rests. We've also talked about playing techniques, so how they sit, how they hold the recorder, how to treat an instrument. And then also, part of playing an instrument is knowing how to hear or audiate notes. So we do singing to help us audiate notes. So we do a lot of singing in our class as well. So it's been kind of helpful to learn recorder and also through singing, and that's forty minutes a week as well. All right, fourth and fifth gets a little complicated. Fourth grade also has the forty minutes that's split with art. And we've been kind of calling this Music Beginning Choir kind of a mishmash of those two because we've been really diving into choral techniques and singing techniques, but also doing some general music curriculum. So students are learning a lot of music notation at a more advanced level, some really more advanced singing techniques than the younger grades. Specifically, we've been learning Kodai and Kerwin hand signs. You may be familiar, like, with do, re, mi, and things like that. That's Kodai and Kerwin hand signs. So we've been learning a lot through those. We call those kind of like the buttons to push for your voice. So we've been getting really good and agile at moving our voice around. We've been learning through rhythms, as you can see on the screen. We like to do, on the top-left corner, that's a picture of "I'm Still Standing" by Elton John. And we do some rhythm clapping that goes along with it. So they're reading rhythms, also learning about different songs, things like that. And then fifth grade, so they have two classes a week. One is forty minutes. That is split with visual art. And this is a brand-new curriculum that we just developed, and it's, we're calling it Music Appreciation. And it's really awesome. The students are in their classrooms, so they receive a packet. And in this packet, we are learning world music. We've got music theory, so learning actually writing notes. You can see that on the top-right-hand corner. We've been doing a lot of music analysis, so listening to music from different places and time periods. We did a genre lesson, which was a hit, so that was fun, and things like that. And then on top of that, they have another forty-minute class a week that does not switch with art, so it's consistent through the whole year, and that's their performance instrument class. So students will take choir, strings, or band, and they will either learn the strings or band instrument. I can personally speak to choir because that's the class that I teach. And we've been working on two-part singing. It's been super fun. They're very excited about, we're singing in rounds and harmonies. We've also been learning a lot of different music from different cultures. We recently learned a New Zealand folk song from the indigenous people. And so, we got to learn all about the Hakka and all this fun stuff, so it's been a really fun time. And yes, that's the music program for elementary specials. Thank you so much.
And finally, out of retirement, Linda Block came back to be one of our art teachers, and she's here to talk to you about it right now. With her partner, Amy Cos.
Hi, yes, as Pat said, I'm now unretired. I don't know if that's a real word or not. But we'll pretend like it is. And we're very, very excited to come back and actually be starting this really from the ground up. So starting the visual arts with our youngest learners, so that it's part of what they're doing. I think... There. Okay. So, and again, I'll speak and I'll leave the slides up there for you to read. And I'll start with a quote. "Visual arts is a fundamental component of the human experience reflecting the world and the time in which we live. Art can help us understand our history, our culture, our lives, and the experience of others in a manner that cannot be achieved through other means. It can be a source of inspiration, reflection, and joy. And so, using this as a springboard, we add that for the young learners that we're working with, that it's critically important that they're also making art, that that's a thing that they do because that's something that human beings do. And we're crafting our program using a number of different resources, and also, of course, with the input and feedback that we get from the students. So we have a set of national core standards and a framework, and so the framework is telling us how and the why, and our standards are telling us the what. And we found a really wonderful resource that's called, of all things, the Art of Education University. And they are one of only three programs that have been approved for adoption by the state of California. So, it's just been a wonderful resource and springboard and starting point. And that's it with that. So again, like the music classes, we have forty-minute weekly lessons that are flip-flopped with the music appreciation classes for all of the first through fifth-grade students. We strive to make sure that the time that we have with the students is the students actually doing art. And we are focusing on each of the sections that we're doing. Focus on not only one of the elements of art. So, for example, we started the year focusing on line and color, but also on what comes out of Harvard Project Zero's Studio Habits of Mind, which cross all curricular areas, so helping students develop their craft, engage and persist, be able to express themselves, to make observations, to reflect on what they've learned, and to understand and communicate and connect with artists, so past, present, future. And so, because it's visual arts, we're using visual aids. So, sorry. Anyway, and so, these are just mostly like process photos of the first units that we did, where the students are just experimenting with line and getting used to using materials. And this was one of our culminating projects. So, you can see they did a number of kind of tangled or line designs inside of fall leaves, and then we asked them to reflect on what they're doing. So... And then finally, some more. And because we want you to hear their voices, we have some artifacts that Amy and I are going to be sharing with you. So, the first one comes from one of our fifth graders who says, "First ideas. To me, art is calming, and artist is someone who enjoys art. When I make art, I feel happy and calm. I think art is important because it teaches you that nothing is perfect."
Art is drawings, paintings, and a way to show something. An artist is someone who can express their feelings, inspire people, and change the world with art. I think art is important because art can inspire, it can show, and it can help.
To me, art is a way for people to come together. When I make art, I feel relaxed. I think art is important because it's a way of peace. I would like to know more about Vincent Van Gogh and what other masterpieces he made during the time he lived. An artist is someone who makes art, but also puts deep meanings in their arts as a secret.
To me, art is a relaxing, beautiful splat of feelings. An artist is someone who isn't perfect. When I feel art, I feel relaxed and comfortable. I think art is important because it is beautiful.
To me, art is a way to show yourself to the world. An artist is someone who can express themselves to the world with art. When I make art, I feel that there is no way that I can make a mistake.
To me, art is something to fall into. All my troubles go away during art. An artist is someone who says they're an artist. When I make art, I feel at ease. I think art is important because sometimes you need something to get your feelings out. I would like to know more about sketching. And finally, when I make- And finally, when I make art, I feel happy and excited. Art makes me happy. To me, art is important because art is one way to express me and be myself. I would like to learn about more art in different parts of the world.
Thank you. So we're very excited to see where this new journey takes us along with our students.
Nice. Earlier today, Amy texted me, she's like, you sure this is only going to be ten minutes? So I'll wrap this up real quick. So hopefully through those presentations, you saw that the specials, as people call them, are essential for Independent in meeting their vision. I've been on a really big kick this year to change the name of special to essential because they aren't just a frill, as the quote says on Linda's slide. And we wanted to leave you with something other than just a memory of this presentation. So the students have selected some pictures to give to each of you that you can take home. I'll pass those out right now, if that's okay.
Aditi, can you come to the stand, please? As we're doing our presentations. If any family members want to come and take pictures closer, you're more than welcome.
The governance team, along with Independent Elementary School, are proud to honor Aditi Sumaranian. Aditi is an amazing example of bravery and perseverance. She came to the United States from India a year and a half ago. She did not speak English and also had to adjust to a new school and home environment. Despite those challenges, Aditi has always tried her best without complaint and has made remarkable progress in her ability to speak and read English. Though there is still much growth to make, Aditi has shown bravery in her willingness to try new things and not give up when things get tough. Her teachers and the staff at Independent are extremely proud of her. The governance team joins Independent Elementary School in honoring Aditi Sumaranian as an outstanding student.
Before you leave the podium, Aditi, would you like to share with us who's joining with you tonight?
My mom is here, my sister and my dad and also my teachers.
Well, I get to give the award to the volunteer from Independent, and that is Linda Brown.
And same offer stands, please feel free to take pictures wherever you would like.
The governance team, along with Independent Elementary School, is proud to honor Linda Brown. Linda Brown is the proud and fabulous parent of two indie eagles, a kindergartner and a fourth grader. She's been a room parent for several years, ensuring a connected classroom community by supporting her teachers and organizing events. She's also helped with full school functions such as RTI assessment support and picture day supervision. This year, with her youngest in kindergarten, she was ready to take her skills to the next level and volunteered, although there's a rumor that she was pressured by the principal, to be the PTO's VP of Fundraising and Events. Already in the three short months of school, she's organized and executed three full school successful events, raising around sixty thousand dollars. Well over anything Independent has ever seen. With five or six more events and activities already in the works, we're excited to see what's to come. Linda's influence is building connections between families, students and staff, and she's making our community stronger. We're so lucky to have her. Thank you for all you do and congratulations. The governance team joins Independent Elementary School in honoring Linda Brown.
Linda, do you want to share who's joining you tonight?
The wonderful friends and family of Independent, our staff.
Now move on to board comments. See Chilton.
I just wanted to say it was really, really great to see all of the programs going on at Independent. I loved choir in elementary school, so I'm really glad that that's going all the way down to fourth grade or to first grade. And they're learning about the folk songs. And I also really loved doing art, so I'm glad that that's more implemented in the schools. And to Aditi, I just want to congratulate you. I think what you're doing is really incredible. I am still struggling through Spanish class after three years. And I think it's really amazing that you came here not knowing any English and you're already really successful at your school. So you should be really proud and congratulations.
So Patrick, I think you earned the award for the most dramatic entrance by a principal.
As we're presenting on the arts.
We're glad you're here. And I have to say that presentation was probably had more detail in it than most any presentation that I've seen here by a school. So it's really terrific and I think you guys have really showed that elementary education is more than just the three Rs, as we used to think back when I was a kid. And you picked out really important things. You said they're fundamental or they're essential, I think you said. Science, art and music are great. I'm really appreciative that you're emphasizing PE because these days, PE and activities have a hard time competing with social media. And I think it's to the detriment of the health of our students. So thank you, Coach, wherever you are over there. Yeah, great. So and finally, thanks so much for the art. These are really, they're very attractive. I mean amazingly so. So thanks very much for that and for the report. Good luck for the rest of the year.
I was honestly feeling a little emotional during some of the presentations here, actually all of it. Because one of the things that I think we don't always think about when we think about things like science, art and music is that these really are things that truly bring not just like, you know, amazing things out in our kids, but they really bring like a worldview, you know, in a way that I think, I'm not sure we've always noticed that, you know, and I'm not sure that even like as I was a kid growing up, I noticed that for myself. And I just, I was really touched by it and I'm really impressed by all of it. You know, Lauren and your science team, like you guys are doing science stuff that, I mean, I never touched in elementary school, you know, none of us probably did. And I just, it's fantastic. And these are the things that are the building blocks of our world that our kids are living in. And you know, with music and art, you know, some of the things I noted down here are, you know, in listening to the kids and their reflections on the process of making art, you know, the idea of feeling relaxed and that imperfections are an okay part of our lives, you know. Those are big thoughts for little kids. And this ability to express myself and experience different parts of the world, you know, it's just wonderful. And actually, it's, I think it's so fitting that you brought these and that, and that you guys were sharing these quotes from these kids tonight. Because right before our open session started, I was walking in the hallway in, you know, in the building here, looking at these projects on the walls and actually had taken a bunch of pictures of them myself. Because you know, the words of our kids are so powerful. And I know no one ever asked me when I was growing up to reflect on my art making and what it meant to me, you know. And now as an adult, I make a lot of art still and I feel those same things that those kids are sharing. So this will go in my studio and I will be reminded of these kids every day, which is really a beautiful thing. And I just also just wanted to add to Coach Stu, I so appreciate some of the things that you highlighted, especially this idea of creating an environment where movement is joyful and where our kids can create a healthy sense of themselves. And also to understand this power of not yet. I've heard that in a few school presentations and I just, I just love that idea. You know, PE can be a really punishing place for a lot of kids. It certainly was for me growing up. And it takes a lot to undo that, you know, in your life. And so to start with a baseline of movement should be fun. And you should feel welcome here, no matter who you are, is really, really lovely. So anyway, thanks everybody for all the hard work that you guys are doing on campus. And thank you, California voters, for Prop 28 because we're seeing it in action this year and it's just fantastic. Thanks.
All right, there's so much to say here. I'll try not to repeat what my fellow board members have said. I want to thank Lauren Biachi for the science. It was, the pictures were worth a thousand words to be able to see what students are really doing to Coach Stu. I also circled the not yet, you know, what a wonderful phrase that is instead of kids feeling like they couldn't do something or whatnot. To Chloe Billings, the music, you gave such great detail on what each grade level is doing and what it is split with. I actually really understand this way better than I did before, how it actually is implemented in the, at the elementary level. To Linda Block and to Amy Coath, to shape identity and bring unity, both at the same time. I think that's so cool. And to our student awardee, Aditi, that was really, it's really good what you're doing and you're, you know, being really good to others at school is so important and all that cooperation. Thank you for that. And to our volunteer, Linda Brown, sixty K, wow. From three events, wow, I've never heard something so good. So thank you to everybody here from Independent.
Just a couple of more things. I love, I mean, you can hear obviously joy, curiosity, right? Collaboration, fun. I do agree, it's so important. I love the choice of word instead of prep or special. It's essential. These are essential things we need to have. And again, to your point, Proposition 28 passed. And there are still school districts deciding what to do next year. And our team here, including Patrick and Naffy and Nia and everybody else, really worked hard to, with our teachers. And we had a group of amazing art and music teachers who got together with us to kind of plan this so that we actually are doing it this year. So I really want to thank all of you for not, you know, for just getting on there and getting this done so we can have this opportunity. Just imagine a whole year would have gone without these programs. And I completely agree with, when we talk about physical education and the non-competitive, I actually have a hard time watching the end of any game because somebody has to win. But, but really it keeps you healthy. It keeps you, I mean, it's just all the great things that you're doing. And science, hands-on, that so many of us never had that opportunity. Such an important thing. So we have amazing teachers here, amazing staff, amazing team, wonderful principal. And I have to say, I am so glad to see Linda Block back. When they said she retired, I'm like, she'll be back. Because we need her. So it's really great to see you, Aditi. Congratulations for being brave. I speak because I was aware you are as a student, learning English, it'll work. And you've already done such a good job. So very proud of you. And Ms. Brown, the great thing is she's got a kindergartner pad. She'll be there for a while. So we're not letting you go. Thank you so much for everything. Great presentation.
I don't, I echo everything and I don't want to repeat everything, but there were a couple of key things that you said and I, and I want to share. No, not only this is well-rounded, you know, I don't know how many know this. I started out as a fine art major and ended up as a science major. Put those two together, Da Vinci, thank you. And then, you know, when we think about being able to self-express who you are through whatever you're feeling, it's so important to give people the right to do that and allow kids to be curious. And that curiosity extends through each of these programs. We're talking about art and being able to express yourself. And then Chloe, I don't know if anybody caught this, and I don't even know if you meant this is a joke, but you said genre lessons that was a hit. I like, I was like, it's so good. But you also talk about the different, you know, songs that you sing from around the world, right? You're helping people be culturally aware and helping us enrich our culture, which is a beautiful thing for kids to learn. And that curiosity goes forward into science, right? Being able to really do real-world experiments. I mean, that's so much fun, but also practical and real. And then being able to use data science, like we need that so bad for people to be able to understand it. And for kids in elementary school to really get a grasp in there is so advanced. And I also want to say, Coach Stu, you said this word, the word about healthy self-concept. There is so much pressure in our world today with social media and society of how our bodies should look and how they should be. And people talk about them and having kids have that safe space to just be comfortable in their bodies and be who they are is such a gift. So thank you for doing that because so many of us, I'm sure, have faced that kind of pressure in the past. And we really want our kids to have a better view of their bodies than we have been treated. And then I'll just lastly say, you know, physical activity is so important to our mental health. It's such, it helps us be well-rounded. So really appreciate you bringing that to the kids and helping them well-round out in multiple ways. And we can really see that your community thrives together and you've got some really excited kids and families that, and teachers and staff. And so with that, I would love to see who's with you tonight, joining you from your team.
Yeah, sure.
The whole left side of the.
So independent staffs and families, could you stand up? Karina, you can stand up too. You teach that indie. And then I think we have some other VAPA and PE teachers potentially in the house too, maybe somewhere. Yeah, at least over there. So a good crew.
Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight, for sharing us all the wonderful things you're doing. Thank you to the staff and families for coming tonight. And last but not least, Adita and Linda, thank you so much for everything that you do for our community. We will now move on to item five, our student board member report. Student board member, Chilton, what's going on in the district?
So at the elementary level, the elementary schools are all very excited to have their Halloween parades or carnivals. Most of those are happening on Friday and a few of them are happening on Tuesday. At the middle school level, Creekside Zombie Thon is this Friday. And they have also implemented a new fun idea this year in their yearbook. The eighth graders are getting dedication pages. So the eighth graders have started to work on those. And both Canyon and Creekside invite their students to dress up for Halloween. At the high school, we're having our ping pong tournament in a few weeks and our canned food drive is also starting. Our varsity girls volleyball made it to the first round of NCS playoffs. We had our pink out home game for football and our senior night is on November 7. Tickets for The Little Mermaid are on sale, so opening night is this Friday. Our cross-country team went to a meet in Southern California and placed very well. And we are also having a costume contest on Tuesday. Oh, and our health center opened at the high school. So that's available for the community, but it's on the high school's campus.
Thank you so much. Now we'll move over on to our superintendent district report.
Just a couple of things. Yeah, thank you. Clinic opened yesterday. It's so exciting to have a clinic on the camp on Casta Valley High School campus for our students and community. It's really, it was really the result of a great collaboration, a a lot of work and like energy just from the board for many, many years, but working with Tuerce Vasquez and also working with community like Fremont Bank Foundation that gave us $100,000 to make that the building available. But just it's it's just a wonderful thing and I'm really excited. I wanted to thank everybody who was there for the ribbon cutting. I've been visiting schools as always. I was at Palomaros, Vanoy, Marshall, Casta Valley High School PTAs. And then, of course, just visiting schools, Chabot Creekside and Casta Valley High School. I love visiting classrooms. It's just, it it's what keeps us going. And and you get to see why we're here. We have a CBOC, our Measure G tour is on Saturday. If anybody wants to join us at 12 o'clock. We will go and visit all the different, not everything, but some parts of the school district where we can share with you what we have done for Measure G. And then it is a professional development day right after Halloween. And some people ask, was that intentional? And I said, yes, because then you can have kids. But it'll be great because then kids don't have to, I mean, students don't have to make sure they go to bed early and can stay up a little later and have fun. And then we have professional development for every for our staff. We had Assembly Liz Ortega at Rotary on Tuesday and it was great to have her there. She is our Assembly member for Casta Valley and the surrounding areas. And that's about it. So we'll hopefully see some of you on Saturday for the Measure G bus tour. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Superintendent Amadi. It is now.
I forgot the most important piece. Last Monday, we went to ROP. And we had a tour with our community. It was absolutely amazing. And tonight, you're going to hear about ROP. But I just wanted to thank Mr. Torpe for welcoming us and 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 getting everybody to see a glimpse of what's actually available at the Regional Occupational Program that exists for our students as well as three other districts for kids to be in the career technical education field. And and then beyond that to to college. So thank you.
What is that time for us to take a recess? So you can go get some food, go do your homework, get some rest, go home. But we have a lot of fun stuff on the agenda. We have our consent agenda. We have a wonderful presentation from Eden Area ROP. We're have a public hearing to reappoint Personnel Commissioner. We have an annual report of the Personnel Commission, standard-based grading using equitable practices update, approving the facility use fee increase, looking at the personnel report, and and lots more. So join us, but we understand if you have to go and we will be back at seven o'clock. Welcome back, everyone. We are moving on to item eight and we are lucky enough to have Connie from CSCA with us tonight. Connie. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, esteemed board, Superintendent Amadi. I would like to report to you tonight on the state of the members of Casta Valley CSCA Chapter 52. Since our last board meeting, I have been contacted by members of our Casta Valley community who share a concern for the well-being of the classified employees who serve Casta Valley Unified. Many of them have asked what they can do to support the people who keep the buses running, their children fed, their students supported, and our campuses clean and secure. Some of those community members are here tonight, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the Casta Valley community for coming out to support us tonight, who are here both in person and who are here tonight virtually. Your presence shows the members of our union respect for the service we give to the Casta Valley Unified School District. And it shows your compassion for the people placed in charge of your children every single day. Also, after my last speech to the board, I have had many teachers and administrators throughout the district share with me their sincere hope that a reasonable living wage will be negotiated and achieved for all the workers in our district who drive buses and vans and serve the food and support our classrooms and keep our campuses running. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of them for their encouragement and support of the people in my union. Your time, your compassion, and your good thoughts have not gone unnoticed. And it is a testament to the solidarity that not just the two unions have with each other in this district, but also the care that many, if not most, of the amazing administrators that lead our many campuses have for the men and women working at their respective sites and also on behalf of their students. Last month, I stood before the board and I asked, why should anyone have to give up a job they genuinely love and that serves the greater good of all to go work in a field that they do not have any passion for? Why is there no desire to pay people who have families to support a living wage just because they happen to work in education? The presence of the many people here tonight tells me that our Casta Valley community believes that our field is one that is worthy of people with a passion for working in education at any level and that we all deserve a good and living fair compensation for our efforts. Last May, Chapter 52, our negotiations team began working together with Casta Valley Unified to strive for the stronger contract that will provide us all with better wages, working conditions, and benefits. As I stand before you tonight, we have still yet to reach an agreement on what fair compensation is for the classified employees who serve this district. However, tomorrow, CSCA and CVUSD will return to the bargaining table to discuss what I am hoping will be an offer that will benefit the van and the bus drivers, the cafeteria personnel who serve the food in our cafeterias, the paraeducators who support our classrooms, the technicians and clerical workers who keep our offices running, our health techs who provide the first aid, the custodians and skilled trades workers who keep our sites clean and functioning, and the warehouse people who make sure all of our sites receive everything. Last but not least, our campus security personnel who do their very best and work so very hard every day to keep our campuses safe and secure. My hope is that we will come to an agreement that recognizes their dedication instead of causing them hardship and potential financial loss. I speak for all CSCA Chapter 52 employees when I say that we as a unified chapter are continuing to fight the good fight together to try and achieve what is equitable and adequate compensation for the classified staff of our esteemed district. The members of Chapter 52 are a group of education professionals who will continue to advocate for and educate the students that we serve in this community because that is what we do and that is what we have always done. Chapter 52 has never let this district or this community down. And we are here tonight to employ the district and the board to not let us down as we endeavor to come to a fair and equitable agreement on compensation for all of our members. Thank you so much for your time and attention tonight. Thank you to the community who came out to support us. And thank you to the board for giving us this time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you, Connie. You are also lucky to have Mark with CVTA with us tonight. Mark, welcome.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Connie. That was awesome. CSCA, you guys are awesome. So thank you for coming here and go, 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 Chapter 52. You know, we are pleased to have reached a tentative agreement with CS, with CBUSD management the other day. We got to where we need to be, and that is great. It would have been nice if we could have gotten there a little bit sooner, especially because we have addressed many of these issues with CBUSD management as well as the board, waiting until the eighth and final session to approve of stipended positions that directly impact our students. Again, we got there and we're thankful, but next time, if we can learn anything, maybe we can get there a little bit sooner. And I do encourage the school board to approve of any agreement if it's ratified by our membership, and I would also like to thank our membership for staying engaged and positive during this bargaining session. Unlike CBTA, our colleagues in CSCA do not yet have a TA, and they need one. Our schools do not function without CSCA. Literally, the doors won't open, and I cannot add to what Connie so eloquently said. But I agree with her 100%. Unsettled contracts cause stress. They cause mistrust, and our school and community do not need that. So please settle CSCA's contract, settle it tomorrow, and CBTA stands in solidarity with CSCA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We will now move on to item nine, public comments for items on the agenda item. Do we have any public comments for not items on the agenda? We will move on to the consent agenda, and I do have a couple of comment cards. So we will be inviting two folks up to speak at three minutes each, and I will invite Mary Lodge to the podium, please.
Welcome, Mary. Hello, members of the board. Thank you. So good to see everybody. Thank you for this time. I am speaking on number 10. First of all, I'm Mary Lodge. I'm a proud parent of Creekside student, eighth grader, going into Castro Valley High next year, so we're super excited. I'm a little bit all over the place, so pardon me. I'm not used to public speaking. It's been, I'm rusty. But on item 10, we have been trying desperately to beautify and get Creekside's marquee up and functioning, which has not been working for two years. It's over 20 years old. Our small but mighty PTC group has been trying desperately to raise the funds to get our marquee fixed. Our campus literally looks like the Bates Motel. I mean, there is no markings on our campus on the front facade that identifies Creekside. There's no logo. There is no name that says Creekside. What identifies our campus is a broken, non-working marquee, and it's sad to see. I'm happy, by the way, that the high school looks beautiful because my son will be attending Castro Valley High School. But what about our other campuses? And Creekside got painted during Measure G, and literally my PTC president and I are walking, getting ready for Zombie-thon, and the front facade that is painted is totally being peeled away and picked at, and the former colors underneath it are showing, which means to tell me the contractors for Measure G maybe did not do 100% the right job. They didn't prep the walls because there's no way that that campus should be peeling. The paint should be peeling that quickly. Anyhow, what is the district doing for Creekside and helping us help you beautify our campus? Are the high school parent, every time we've asked, we're told that there's no money. There's no money. There's no money. What are the high, the high school sports athletics is important, but so is the emotion, the desire to have our school beaut, when you're, when you go to work in a place that looks beautiful, your mental health is already in a good place. You could be kind of having a bad morning, but you go someplace that's pretty and you're like, okay, it's a pretty place that I work. I feel proud to be here, not only for our teachers, but our students, our visitors. What is the high school parents? Are they expected to contribute to the stadium cost of their new sign? I would really like to see some equity for Creekside because we really feel like all other campuses get attention and we are left run down. So thank you for this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. I will now invite Clayton Lodge to the podium. Welcome, Clayton. We will not. You are correct.
Hello. My name is Clayton James Lodge, and as my beautiful mother was saying, without our Creekside marquee, I, to me, I just feel like that our school feels a bit emptier and that our events are kind of suffering because no one knows what's going on, and none of the parents know like what kind of like events, like cross-country wrestling, golf, and all that. And like she said, the marquee has been down for two years, and I just feel like with the working and beautiful marquee that Creekside will become more lively and stuff. And that's really all I have to say to good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. I just want to say it's so great to see a student come and advocate for themselves. So thank you for sharing your voice. And this is an action item for the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? I just want to take a moment and note item 10C, declaring November to be Native American Heritage Month and recognize the Alonee people whose land that we are currently on. Student Board Member Chilton, your vote. Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes 5-0. We will now move on to item 11, reports, discussion, and action items. Superintendent Amadi.
Yes, we're excited to have Mr. Torpe, who is going to share with us what they are up to at Eden Area ROP. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Well, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. My name is Blaine Torpe. I'm superintendent of the Eden Area ROP, and it's my honor to be in that role, and it's my privilege to be here to represent the Eden Area ROP. During the independent presentation, I was thinking so much about, you know, when, when children are young and so enthusiastic and so open, and, you know, how can we keep that going, you know, through middle school, through high school, and, you know, and beyond? And so it makes me think about the power of what we're doing at ROP, of building that enthusiasm and partnering for, with a purpose with you. You know, the partnership between CBUSD and Eden Area ROP drives thousands of Castro Valley students to college and career readiness, helping them find their purpose and their potential. I'm really, really proud of our organization. Last year, we came up with our core values, and I want to thank you Superintendent Amadi for modeling that for us with the core values for Castro Valley Unified. It's such an important thing for an organization to come together and to really understand what they believe in, because it helps us make our decisions and helps us plan for the future with keeping students in mind, the community in mind. So I'm very proud of these. I'm also very proud that they spell out Eden Area ROP, if you haven't seen that already. Equitable, accessible, restorative outcomes, professional, you know, we're about, you know, eradicating the impacts of bias, privilege. We're about making sure that people, students, and families have economic and educational mobility, thinking about restorative practices, thinking about outcomes for students that, you know, we think, you know, college, career, but I also like to, you know, have us consider life-affirming endeavors, you know, that they are pursuing something that brings them joy, which of course goes back to that indie thing, right? When, when children are joyful and they carry that joy through their life, it's so powerful. And then being professional, you know, we want to be that for each other. We want to be that for our students, and we develop these core values with the board, with the students, with our staff. It was really powerful and it's been, I'm very proud of them. So thank you for letting me share them. A little recap about ROP. So we are a regional occupational program providing career and technical education. We have hands-on and relevant work-based learning inside the class and outside of the classroom. That's Mr. Byron Thompson and one of your deck of leaders from Castro Valley High School. You know, powerful career and technical student organization that really builds leadership and connection for students. We are a partnership with Ford, with Ford School Districts. Castro Valley is one of our favorites, but don't tell the others I said that. We serve approximately 4,800 students a year. We have 20 pathways at our partner school sites, and then we have 12 at our center. We also have an adult program where we provide adults' education opportunities in electrical, continuing ed for electrical, if they want to get their contractor's license, medical assisting, dental assisting, welding. So it's a really exciting place to be because things are really happening and helping people find, find the future. The best part of any presentation is actually listening to the wonderful students. So I'd really like to introduce Haley Ernie, who's from Castro Valley High School, and is going to talk a little bit about her experience in careers in education.
Hi, I'm Haley Ernie. I'm a current senior at Castro Valley High School. I also attend ROP, taking careers in education. I chose this class because I've always had an interest working with kids. Recently in class, I've been learning how to create lesson plans, which I have the opportunity to teach in my class at internship. My internship is at two first grade classes at Marshall Elementary School. They're currently learning number sentences and how to write full sentences. In the short time I've known, I've developed a love for my students. I haven't, I haven't attended ROP for long, but I've noticed a good change in me personally and academically. I've always struggled in school, but with ROP and my new school, my new skills I've learned, I'm now passing all my classes. Personally, I've become more social and now comfortable with things that are usually out of my comfort zone, for example, speaking, and I'm now a current ambassador for careers in education PM session. With ROP, I've learned that I'm going to be a good teacher in the future. After high school, I plan on attending Los Bacitas College and a majoring in childhood development. When I'm finished with my two years, I want to attend a four-year out-of-state. Thank you.
Great job, Haley. Like a natural teacher, holding the room. Excellent. A little bit by the numbers. So for us, we're very excited because we have actually had a five-year high in our enrollment at the center as well as in our classes offsite and in just CTE in general. And I will talk, talk a little bit about it later, but it's really a signal that, you know, students know it too. You know, they know that they want to find their purpose and connect and understand their potential, and they're seeing it happen. There was a time where CTE was kind of a byword for, oh, well, you know, that's where if you're not going to college, or that's not what it is. What it is now is connecting you more deeply to all of the relevant experiences outside of the classroom. So we have students who are, you know, in college classes, on our campus. You know, they're pursuing, you know, we have internships that are at sites, you know, Haley's already impacting the lives of young people. So it's really, really powerful. Students know it, and I'll get to who else knows it later. This is the sector data. So the state has 15 industry sectors, and within those, there's a multitude of pathways. Eden Area ROP covers 12 of the 15 sectors, and these are the ones that Castro Valley Unified students are a part of. That's a picture of one of our students in our first responder class, and they actually, you know, part of the work-based learning is they go to the Hayward Regional Fire Training Center once a week, and they train with real firefighters, and they put out fires and they'll do things that I'm afraid of. It's pretty impressive. Funding. So, you know, we're always, everyone, we're always looking for funding. So Castro Valley Unified School District provides funding to the Eden Area ROP, and in turn, the ROP provides courses, pathways, FTE, CBUSD High Schools, grant management, transportation, work-based learning, college and career readiness, and career and technical student organizations. And one of the big things that we do is we manage these grants. So we bring in millions of dollars to our partner districts. Those dollars go straight to students. They go to programs. They go to helping build these futures. I'll talk a little bit later about some other grant opportunities I'm very excited about. Some highlights. First time in 10 years, Castro Valley is now attending Eden Area ROP in the AM and the PM. And I'm very, very excited. So we've seen an increase of student participation. We're also opening up those possibilities. So students don't have to make that decision of, well, I can only go in the afternoon, but that's when my favorite class is. So we're giving them flexibility and the ability to be nimble and responsive in their needs. As of October 23rd, we've submitted $8 million in four grant applications. That's the CTIG, which is the Career and Technical Incentive Grant. The Strong Workforce Grants, two of those, and a STEP Grant, which I'll talk about a little bit later. Very proud that our careers in education two class has become our third honors course, which is also validation and affirmation that these are rigorous courses of study and that these students are doing great work. The CBUSD summer internships, you had 20 students interning over the summer at CB Sand, Chamber of Commerce, CB Marketplace, Aurora Catering, and more. We've increased dual enrollment opportunities at, at the center. So you might be familiar with articulation agreements, which were ways we earned students early, they earned early college credit. And now with dual enrollment, it actually is, that is accepted by all CSUs, all USC's, and most private schools. So it's, it's actually on their college transcript. We had an advanced manufacturing day where CVHS students participated in a site tour of Reflexion Medical. So they're really getting to see how these things are working in practice. We were also awarded a California Apprenticeship Innovation Grant for Dental Assisting, and what we're working on is having our high school dental assisting students be in a formal pre-apprenticeship that would then move into the adult program, which is a formal apprenticeship, and we're working with Tavercio Vazquez on that and a wonderful, wonderful community partner where our students also get to intern. So what's ahead? This has been such an exciting time. So we're in the process of, actually Friday, we'll be submitting an application for a zero emission vehicle training program grant. It's a $1.5 million grant that's going to allow us to have a high school program that's going to cover zero emission vehicle training that would then have them set to go into organizations like AC Transit. AC Transit's been a wonderful partner in this and helping us every step of the way. So this is really, really exciting. Personally, I'm also excited about the STEP Grant application. It's going to allow us to bring on some staff to support students with disabilities in our program, look at building some transitional programming for young adults. And that one is, you know, it's so critical because students, very often students with disabilities do really well at our program, and that's because it's differentiated, it's hands-on, it's irrelevant, it speaks to them. And I'm just so excited to be able to build in more supports and have them career-ready with, you know, lots of soft skill training. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about it. We're looking at expanding dual enrollment and high-leverage WBL, so work-based learning. So with the dual enrollment is we have two dual enrollment classes now. We have one that's going to get cleared pretty soon. Then we have two more on deck, and that's just increasing the opportunities for students. One of the other great things about dual enrollment is that you have a student who finishes the class and they're still in high school, and they know that they can pass and excel in a college class. So that's, you know, I think a very powerful message for students. So thinking about the future, you know, we see students wanting to be in CTE, and I'd also like to note that it's a very powerful message and direction that's coming from the state of California. So over the summer, the State Board of Education, you know, basically approved the California State Plan for CTE. In August, Governor Gavin Newsom had issued an executive order about career pathways. Just recently, the state superintendent of public instruction, Tony Thurman, had a paid internship summit and is really pushing this initiative. And what's really interesting is you pull that plan, you look at that executive order, listen to Superintendent Thurman, and what you hear is them describing what ROPs across the state are doing. And so, you know, I think it's really important for the powers that be to understand that there's systems in place and they're working. We have, you know, very tight, berated, you know, cradle-to-career opportunities for students, and we, and they exist. So it's very exciting to see these things moving forward at that level. So we've been at the forefront of providing college and career readiness for students with your guidance, your assistance, your support, guiding students to understand their purpose, and I think that it's really important to understand that this is not a thing of the past. We're not bringing something back. Like, this is the future, and it's really, really exciting. So we thank you for your continued support. I'd like to invite Haley back up so we can answer any questions. She'll take the hard one.
Trustee Adams?
Yes, I just had one question. I remember a couple of years ago, ROP was able to accept students that were maybe behind a few credits in high school. in high school and then they have someone at ROP where they can do credit recovery. How is that going?
It's going well. So we have a staff member, um, who is, comes to us every, every now and then. He's actually spends most of his time in CBUSD, but still supporting college and career students, uh, to make sure that they're not too far behind. So it's going well. I think for some of our other partner districts, staffing's still an issue. Um, so that's been, been a real challenge.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and then I remember last year at the high school when ROP came and presented, I, I really liked the presentation and I think ROP is really important. Some of my friends are in it and they're really excelling. Um, and I was just wondering if in the presentation, if it would be possible to get student presenters? Um, cause I think it's good to see it from an adult aspect, but like if I saw it from my peer, I think, um, it would definitely incite me to join more. So that would just be a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you.
Trustee Hammond?
Sure. Um, this may be more of a comment than a question, but first of all, Haley, thank you for presenting about your own experiences. It must be really powerful student, you know, at your age to walk into a classroom and say, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to try this. And I, um, that's, I, I applaud you for putting yourself out there because I know that can be really difficult. And that also I think really speaks, you know, Mr. Torby, to the programming that you guys are offering, uh, to empower our kids to, to do that sort of thing and to find that kind of like confidence and, you know, in things. I really liked your comment also about how, um, CTE, um, connects deeply to relevant experiences outside the classroom. And, um, you know, we're living in a world where I think that is becoming more and more critical to our youth and to how we raise our kids, you know, to make sure that they understand that the things they do at school do carry over into the world, you know? And there are ways to merge these things together. I was curious, you mentioned that we offer 12 out of the 15 CTE sectors. What are the three that we're not offering? And what do we have to do to add them?
I wasn't ready for that pop quiz question. Uh, we're definitely agriculture. So that's a big one in the Central Valley.
Agriculture?
Sciences. Um, yeah, so they'll, they'll do, uh, you know, like the animal side and then also just agriculture itself. But I'll have to look to see what the other two are.
I was curious. I know that, um, I know that we offer so much. And when I did visit, you know, down there a while back, I was so impressed with just the hands-on-ness of all of it. You know, it just is really, there's nothing better than putting your hands on a project and saying, oh my God, I did that. It's just really beautiful. So, um, yeah, thank you so much, both of you.
Trustee Howard?
I should ask a really hard question, shouldn't I guess? But actually I don't have a question, but I do have some comments and that is, you know, I probably had the best vantage point of watching this program for the last 10 years of maybe any board member in the four districts. Both as a governing board member and the biotech advisory committee for 12 or 13 or 14 years. And it's an astounding program and I've been able to watch it grow from when Linda took over, uh, your predecessor and, uh, brought in all those, a lot of those grants and got them started. And, um, and now I've watched it for the last year and see it just grow yet again to another level. And I think, uh, it's just amazing what has happened over there. And, uh, I just think this program is such an important part of our educational program here. So I think it's fantastic. I guess I do have one question and that is, I think I asked you this last year, that is, how many adult students do you serve? It's an interesting number.
1,500.
And in those qualification programs?
Yeah. So there's about a 500 that go through our electrical day program. And so they get their electrical training card. So we're an approved provider through the ETPL list. So that allows them to go work in the field. Uh, then we have our medical and dental. That's about, you know, 50 students every 18 weeks. And two cohorts, AM and PM. And then we have our, uh, electrical evening classes. And so those are continuing education so that they, it's required for them in the field. And then also prepares them for their contractor's license exam. Uh, we also have our direct service provider, which is an online program. And actually we do about half of the state for that. And that is for anyone that want to work, that wants to be certified to work in a care and, you know, um, a, a care and, you know, industry.
My question is for Haley. Do you know where you apply for the job when you're a teacher? Right here in this office. We need, we, and there, Dr., Dr. Zamora. But it's just so exciting. What I want to say is, Mr. Torby, I mean, Linda was absolutely amazing. Lane Torby is just wonderful. It's just the perfect match for someone who has a vision and just knows how to, how kids actually work and what's best for students. So I just want to thank you for everything you've done. Just all the things that we've done to continue to see what else we can do for kids. And I, and I just, there's such pride in that work. And when we visited, you could just tell the, I mean, I wish I was back in high school and I would have done that. So thank you so much.
I just have one more thing to say before you go, before you, before you leave us. Uh, first, thank you for inviting us last week. Um, I was able to join and, and see hands-on firsthand. What I love about ROP is that we're looking at different opportunities for different people to really understand where they want to be and really lift people up. You know, it creates this opportunity beyond just college. And there are so many trades that make lots of money in the Bay Area. Have, has anybody tried to get a contractor lately? It's a great opportunity. And, you know, I think we don't pay enough attention to the trades sometimes and, um, we've got great folks that are really diving in and, and doing some really good work. And I have to say, I am definitely excited about your grant for zero emissions auto mechanics. I, that's the future, right? Already now making that happen. Um, so I really appreciate that. And I, and I do have to say, uh, Superintendent Torby, we are so sad when you left and we're so glad that you're still part of our community and still contributing, uh, to the greater CVE community. Um, so really appreciate it. And Haley, come work for us someday. Thank you. Oh, Gary?
Yeah, I want to say one more. This is a personal thing, sort of. Uh, as a board member, one of the proudest things that I think that I've, the things that I'm the most proud of, I've been in on the hiring of two superintendents and they're both in this room. And that's the, among the best things I think I've ever done. So thanks to both of you.
Thank you, Torby. We will now move on to item 11B and I will open the public hearing reappointment of personnel, commissioner. Are there any comments?
I speak.
Oh.
If you introduce, uh, item 11C.
Oh, I, I need to, yeah, of course. And I will close the public hearing. So over to you, Dr. Zamora.
Thank you. So we have the great fortune to also joining Commissioner Lowe, Commissioner Wilkinson and Commissioner Bailey, as well as our Director of Human Resources, Dr. Goshu. So we're, we're very fortunate to have Commissioner Lowe joining us for one more year. If you remember back on September 13th, the board recommended for his reappointment. And so we're here now to reappoint Commissioner Lowe and he's done a great service these past three years as well, even longer than that. But to have consistency with our three commissioners is very important for Castro Valley.
This is an action item.
I'm happy to move that we confirm the appointment of Mr. Christopher Lowe. It's a great team that we've got out there.
And I will second that.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, sorry. Uh, trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes for zero, zero. Welcome and thank you for representing us again and your service. We will now move on to item D, 2022, 2023, and a report of the Personnel Commission. And lo and behold.
So as always, we always have the appointed, new appointed commissioner present the annual reports. We have Commissioner Lowe to present the 22, 23 annual report.
Well, thank you all so much for the, uh, the honor and the privilege to continue to serve the district as a personnel commissioner. It is, uh, I've, I've done this, uh, since 2011 when I, uh, took over for Robert Macias, who had moved out of the community. So, um, it has been, like I said, an honor and a privilege. So the next five slides, um, are har, are basically highlights of our larger report. So since, uh, 2011, uh, I've had the privilege of serving on the Personnel Commission. And for the last eight years with the Commissioners, uh, Wilkinson and Bailey. Uh, as a reminder, the district hires, promotes and retains classified employees on the basis of their merit or their qualifications. The testing and selection processes are designed to provide fair and equitable treatment of all applicants. And is intended to ensure that the employees best meet the district's staffing needs. Here is a summary of the Human Resources Department's recruitment efforts, uh, for this last year. And as you can see, um, in each of the, uh, four tables, staff has refined its work processes and used technology to create increasing trends in these following areas of the number of applications processed, the number of applicants placed on hiring eligible lists, the, uh, appointment of individuals to both permanent and substitute positions. And then finally, the number of current employees in positions of greater responsibility through promotion. So what that tells me, um, is that the Human Resource Department is doing a bang-up job with regards to outsourcing and making known what job opportunities that the district has, putting them, putting them through very relevant testing, um, processes to confirm that they have the essential knowledge, skills and abilities to do the jobs that they've applied for very well. Um, all of that, um, creates a very, um, good and supportive workforce that supports our, our credentialed teaching staff as well. Next slide. All right. So, um, this slide represents a, uh, the work completed during the 22, 23 academic year with Personnel Commission Oversight. And in each of these, uh, four, uh, quadrants, you can see that, um, uh, we've reviewed and updated, uh, job descriptions in the maintenance and operations job family as well as the transportation job family. Some of the events and celebrations that have focused on our, uh, classified employees, um, is to help prepare them, uh, from, for success from day one through their, uh, point of, uh, retirement. Hopefully they are retiring from, you know, the district. Third, um, Classified Professional Development Days. And these are days that are set aside, uh, with very focused topics of development. So that again, our classified employees can hone their knowledge, skills and abilities to interact better with teaching staff as well as students. And then finally, Classified Professional, um, excuse me, Classified Employees of the Year. There are many deserving individuals of this honor in our district. And, um, you can see who our district winners are and, uh, one at the county level. And so again, uh, I thank you for this honor and privilege to serve as a personal commissioner, hopefully approved by the state superintendent as well, um, for the next three years. And, uh, that's our presentation for the evening.
I wanted to thank you for all of your hard work. Um, you know, sometimes bills get introduced and there was a bill that I know, uh, Dr. Gachur, you know, was, uh, sharing with you. I know you were very concerned about that. That was at AB or SB 1699. It was like last minute and it, and the, and all the push and all the work that had to be done at the state. So for the governor to, to veto it, I know last minutes, we were talking at AXA about like, it would have not worked at all. And, and what you've been able to do, that would have basically tied your hand. So it's really important to be aware and I, and I really want to appreciate all of you for, for your advocacy as well in making that happen.
All right.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you for everything that you all do. Before we move on to the next item, I just want to note, some of you may notice we're missing someone up with us. Michael Kuziak, he is not here today. He had a conflict in another state. But while he is not here, I did want to verbally state that trustee Adams is acting as vice president today. Just want to make sure that it's known and on the record. We are really excited for the next report as well. We, um, get to get an update on a standard-based grading using equitable practices. And I know we've got a team that's been working hard on it and we can't wait to hear more about it. Did you want to introduce them, Nia, or?
Good evening, um, board members and cabinet members and stakeholders that are still in the audience. We, um, are really excited to present to you the work that's happening with standards-based grading using equitable practices. Um, we've been doing a lot of work and have a great team here tonight to share what we've been up to. Um, so we're really going to talk about, I'm not sure if that's going to share up on the screen.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. All right. So we're going to talk about some of our big work, um, including professional development, with standards-based grading using equitable practices. We're going to give you an update about our grading policy committee. And then we'll talk about next steps for both this year and next year. Skip that slide. So as far as our big district-wide work, um, we're really focusing on consistent practices for redos and retakes and what, um, a lot of our teachers are referring to as reassessment. Um, and what that really involves is like getting our new teachers and some of our seasoned veterans really up to speed on the why behind equitable rating practices, what it really looks like. And then also like, what's the system you need to have in place to really make redos, retakes, reassessment work? Everybody is in the mindset, yeah, the concept of redos and retakes. Yeah, everybody should have multiple, all of our students have multiple opportunities to show what they know, to show mastery of the content. But really it's about the system that's put in place in order to make sure that it works as seamlessly as possible. And then we're talking about centering knowledge by removing non-academic factors. And non-academic factors, people might say, well, what does that mean? Um, and we're really talking about, we're focused on mastery of the content. And so non-academic factors like work habits, cell phone distractions, tardies, punctuality, effort, classroom participation, like those are all really important things that we want to note down on grade, uh, on, on some type of report. But it doesn't go into the calculation of, does the student know the essential standard or not? Does the student know the content or not? And that's what we're talking about when we're centering knowledge, centering mastery of the content versus all, all some other non-academic factors that also play out. But that is important work and it's slow and steady work because for many, many, many years, educators, teachers, even when I was a teacher, we included all of those things in our grading practices. And so getting out of that practice is, is takes some time and effort. Um, and a lot of conversation and a lot of hard work, which our teachers are doing. Um, we also are creating and sharing, um, our work with the community because just like educators, our community is also used to a traditional way of doing grading. And so we want to make sure that as we move and change our practices, we bring our community along with us. And so on September 18th, as a part of that, um, work, we brought Joe Feldman in, who's, um, the kind of guru these days of equitable grading practices. who's the kind of guru these days of equitable grading practices and author of the book Grading for Equity, and had him speak to our community virtually. We had a good, we had good turnout virtually, over a couple of hundred people at the at the evening and really talking about, so what are traditional grading practices? And what do new grading practices look like that make it more bias resistant, motivational and accurate for our students? We also know that it's important to kind of keep that messaging going. So we've developed some tools along the way. So we have a one pager which board members, you have, well, actually, you have the flyer that we created on on the diocese. And then also we're creating a teacher and parent Q and A so that as we get these questions coming in, we answer the questions and then put that out to the community so we can keep people updated about the work that we're doing. All right. And then specifically site level, and we have people here that are going to talk about the real work that's happening, kind of like on the ground. But in the big picture of things, in September, all site administrators shared our current grading board policy and administrative regulations with our staff because what we discovered was not everybody knows what's inside of the board policy and the administrative regulations. And we really need everybody to know because there's a lot of good stuff already about equitable grading practices in our current board policy. So we want to make sure that people know that our educators actually know that. And then at the cross-site collaboration with elementary and the middle school teams, what they've done is their their most recent cross-site collaboration, when they get together and talk about equitable grading practices, what does that look like? What are the systems that you have in place? What don't you have in place? Where can we support each other to grow together? And then we also asked all of the staffs at every one of the schools to do a little survey and to actually talk about those practices. And so we could do some data collection from every one of our schools. So you also have that one pager that has the questions that we asked every single one of our schools to go through departments, grade levels, et cetera, so we can actually have some data to look at, like what is our current condition so we can help support growth from from that point on. And then last but not least, our high school pilot, which kind of started the grassroots effort a couple of several years ago, is always open to new members joining that PLC. They're always open to like just they'll come on down and like we'll help to to develop practice and capacity. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it off to the rest of the team. I'm going to go with, well, this is stuck. It's not moving. I'm going to hand it off to Director Sklopp.
So we had twenty teachers sign up for our Action Research Group. It includes high school, elementary school and middle school teachers. It's going to start with two kickoff days in November and then four workshops throughout the school year. Some of our outcomes are for teachers to gain a deeper understanding of equitable grading practices. So they also will build their capacity and to enhance their grading systems. And one of the more impactful things that's happening is each of the twenty teachers will receive four individualized coaching sessions from Crescendo staff. We also have an administrator cohort, which is a pathway for our leaders to develop their capacity and skillset to lead this work at their sites. Participants in the cohort include all four of our secondary principals, two of our secondary APs, two elementary principals and Nia David and myself. We had a kickoff in September for this. We had our first workshop last week and we have three more workshops throughout the school year. And you can see up or on your screens, some of the things we'll be doing this school year. And Principal Wong is going to talk more in detail about it when she presents. But first, I want to talk about some work that all of the elementary sites are doing or have done. On October third, all elementary sites had what we call a cross-site collaboration, which means that everyone at every elementary site is doing the same work. So all of the teachers read an article called "The Problem with Grading", and it discussed the pillars of equitable grading practices. And then all the principals facilitated conversations with their staff to have them look at their current, their own grading practices and explore whether they're motivational, bias resistant and accurate. So it led to some really good conversations and also reflections and and some some looking at what can we do better? At another staff meeting in October, all of the elementary principals had their teachers read a chapter or snippet from the chapter of the book Grading for Equity. And it was specifically about redos and retakes, practices that support hope and a growth mindset. And the sheet that our assistant Sue Fraschichi was referring to, that you all have the survey, all of the, sorry, a bug, all of the grade level teams worked together to come up with agreements that they were willing to or that they felt like they were ready to implement at their grade level to have consistency across grade levels in their equitable grading practices. The next step with that is that I'm meeting with each principal and we're looking at the grade level feedback together to talk about the coaching and the support that grade levels will need for next for the next steps. Unfortunately, Principal Fariah was not able to be with us tonight to share Stanton's story. Principal Wong is here to share Canyon's story.
Thank you and good evening. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the systems that we're developing at Canyon. As a bit of a snapshot at the secondary level, our focus continues to be on building capacity around those three pillars that you've heard discussed that our grading should reflect accuracy, should be bias resistant and should also be motivational. So we've continued that through discussion at our Canyon staff meetings, through our site leadership team, within our department meetings, and most recently at our cross-site collaboration. Just yesterday, we had the opportunity to come together Canyon and Creekside colleagues and discuss the survey that I believe you have in front of you there and talk about those questions and the criteria and what does that look like in action? And that, how is that happening, whether that's in the English department, whether that's in the math department, in our elective classes, in physical education classes? What does that mean? And what is, what are the practicalities of that? What does that look like? And what we've found is that the retakes, redos and reassessments are happening. And now the process is focused on systematizing that for success. So we continue to approach that with that growth mindset approach and a willingness to ensure that our grades are an accurate reflection of what our students know, right? Show what you know. And so the implementation stage that we're at with the secondary level, I'm finding is building on that common foundational understanding to address the practicalities and nuance of the resources that we have available, whether that be the Aries Grade Book, our RTI or Response to Intervention Time, how to use rubrics within the classroom, and also the timelines that we have within quarter and semester grade reporting. So again, those practicalities, right? When the rubber meets the road, how are we making that work? And that's ongoing work to do the work well. I had, I have the opportunity to participate in the leadership cohort that was mentioned earlier. And this is a great opportunity to meet virtually with administrators from across the nation, across time zones. And we're talking about how we're doing that work, what challenges we're facing and how we're overcoming that, also doing some reflection on what are the areas that we feel solid on and how can we support each other in the areas where we want to continue to grow so that we can build the capacity with our staff? And also build the communication pieces with our families and our community as well. So it's not a simple checklist. It's really about evaluating our structures and reframing our mindset to ensure that our grading practices align with our vision of equity. And to talk a little bit more about what that looks like from a teacher leader perspective, it's my honor to introduce Ms. Effie Su.
Hi, everyone. Way different here at this point in the presentation than at the beginning when the school is usually doing it. Thanks for having me. As a math department, we're super excited about this work and we've been really excited for a number of years. We kind of are touted as the ones that are ahead. There's lots of work to still be done. But we, as a department, are using a four-point scale. We are using common assessments and assessments particularly that are broken down by standard. And our collective agreement on understanding what students should be learning each chapter has led us to create opportunities for common student assessments that are both frequent and intentional. And because all of our assessments are broken down by standard, and for some grades we call them checks because everything is a check for understanding, whether it be a small problem, whether it be a full assessment, we provide frequent opportunities for students to really show and demonstrate what they know, wherever that is on the timeline. And on any given assessment, we are looking for four to six different standards. We usually try and aim for about forty percent new or recent standards and sixty percent are actually old or previous standards because we want to make sure that students have that opportunity. At any given point in the grading period, we're looking to test each standard at minimum four times. So it's it's a lot during the time for them to show their growth. The frequent opportunities is crucial. And we tell students that we're always looking, don't dwell on the current assessment or whatever your score is, that they should always be looking ahead to the next one. And just the other week, I had a student say they got their check back and they said in class, wait, when's the next one? They're looking at their paper, they're looking at their mistakes. I really want to make sure that I know what I need to do differently because I know I'm going to get it in just about a week's time. So pushing forward is really the mindset and making sure that they're, like, we're building in the opportunities to show their understanding and not at any given snap point of time. It also validates the fact that learning is a process and learning takes time. And we're not going to be assessing this just a one and done. And that depending on whatever the chapter is, if it's a really crucial standard, we're looking for that longevity of understanding and making sure that it persists and shows up throughout the school year. As a math department, we've been extraordinarily fortunate to have release days that are dedicated and we've had this for over a decade. And during that time, amongst other things that we're accomplishing, we're taking a lot of time to really look at our standards. And that's where we're establishing and refining those essential ones for each course. And because we take the reassessment really seriously, we're constantly honing in on exactly what we want students to know. Each year, we're kind of paring down or reworking or rewording so that we're really intentional about explicitly telling students what we're looking for on any given assessment. There are no things that we're keeping aside for ourselves. We tell them very, very clearly, these are the points you're going to be tested on. And they know what the the standard, the rubric scoring is for each of those pieces. And identifying those standards ahead of time allows us to be explicit with the students and then also to focus in on actual math concepts and not really addressing the constant question of what can I do to bring up my grade? They know where they are at any given point and they know where they are on the spectrum for each standard. I'm going to turn it over to Director David Longo.
Evening, everybody. So some quick highlights and updates, particularly right now about our grading policy committee and team. Incredible group of folks. Two of our members are here present with us right now, Principal Wong and Teacher Ms. Su. They've been integral in helping to work with the team. The group is about twenty folks, both administrators and teachers that have been meeting consistently since March to help support the direction of this work. This school year, we focused on the kickoff with the the presentation to the community and they participated in that. And then this month, we've been working on the retake, redo, reassess conversation and trying to get the work out to district-wide to all the teachers as you've heard about so far. And then they're also helping to design and influence the direction we go with professional development and support needed by teachers. So this, these next steps are for the whole system, not just for the grading policy committee team. So this year, we're focusing on, as you heard, the Teacher Action Research Group. The things that we're highlighting on this slide are in partnership with the Joe Feldman's group, the Crescendo Education Group. And so they're leading the Action Research Team, both the teachers and the administrator groups. There's also online learning modules that are available to teachers. Any teacher that wants to sign up to do that this year will have that opportunity. Same with the book study. We have availability for as many teachers that would like to participate in that. And then there's also a presentation for new teachers or any teachers that want to refresh. It's a two-hour virtual presentation that the Crescendo team will do with us at some point in the near future. And then we also want to highlight that we're going to have another community meeting before the end of this school year to provide updates on the work from this year and also what folks have to look forward to ahead next year with the work that we're focusing on. Also highlighting the work for next year. So as we're planning and doing the work right now, we're also thinking big picture as to where we're going with the work. So this year, we're focused on retake, redos and reassessing. Next year, we're looking at a proportional distribution for grading. So as most of us know, in the secondary world, the traditional system of grading has a disproportionate system where the F makes up, in many cases, the zero to fifty-nine percent. So it's disproportionate compared to the other grades, which are broken down by ten percent increments. A is, you know, ninety to a hundred, B is eighty to eighty-nine. So it's not proportional in terms of all the five different grades that students could receive on their report card. So we're trying to do work next year around trying to come up with some systems to be more proportional in our grading. So that'll be one of the big projects for next year. And also continuing to dig in and do work with the consistent practices around removing non-academic factors, as Nia talked about earlier in the presentation. We're doing that work this year, but we know that's going to carry into next year and take additional time to work that piece out, knowing that we're focused on the retake, redo and reassess for this year. And we also want to make sure our system is set up to support new teachers coming in because we know that our our university programs that provide credentials for teachers are not spending any time really at all around grading practices. And so when teachers come into our system, we want to make sure that they're supported. And we also want to continue to support our administrators and teachers in our system to be able to grow and work together on this work. With that, that's the end of our formal presentation and we are looking forward to any questions or comments that you may have.
Trustee Adams?
Okay, so first I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you're doing on this. It is a big change. That picture at the end there, that was really cool. Is that at Canyon Middle School with the rainbow? Yeah, yeah, super cool picture. Of course, as you know, I'm a teacher, so I and I would have special ed kids and I'd look at their grades and see how they were doing in their other classes. And I would sometimes have to go through an exercise with them of what a zero does to your grade. If you have a zero in there, let's say you had four or five grades and one of them is a zero. You know, it's like if we pulled that zero out, this would be your grade. You know, you've got a bunch of sixties and seventies and that kind of thing. But because you have this zero now, you know, oh, you're not passing the class even though you passed four out of the five items. I would have to, you know, I would sit there and crunch numbers with them and try to explain that to them. I'm like, you need to do something about the zero grade. So it's going to be good, I I think, when, you know, all said and done, that if they don't have it, you know, it's a fifty percent and it doesn't completely take you down, dive you down into the rabbit hole. The other thing that I always found a a thing with for kids was being a secondary teacher is if they were not passing and it's getting close to, let's say, the grading period and that kind of thing, you would see kids give up, the motivational factor. It's really important to keep them motivated all the way to the end, that there's a way out. There's something you could do to pull your grade up. There's a way to to pass it. I think Redwood High School at the time did a great job in giving, I mean, not that the other schools could do this, but by giving partial credits in order to always make it motivational, you could get something. If you did some work, you could get some partial credit. And I'm I'm sure that this type of grading and being able to do all the the retakes, the redos, the reassessments are a great way to keep kids motivated, keep them in there and keep them doing it. One last little question I'll have is, are there any resist, is there any resistance from old teachers?
I think, so I wouldn't call resistance. I think when we
I don't know what to call.
I think that there's always some hesitation anytime you're asked to do something new and different, especially when in each, you know, traditional teacher credential program, there is no official training on how to go about grading. And so everybody that kind of comes out of the, you know, teacher credential is like, well, I'm going to kind of do what my teachers did with me because that's what I've seen and know and familiar with. And so what we we recognize that, like, there's, there isn't anybody coming. So when they come, when new teachers come to our district or we have, you know, seasoned veterans who are like, you know, I have some questions about that. We talk it through, have conversations. We have teachers that have great models that have been working on it and really putting their systems into place. And that type of sharing of practice helps, but then also understanding that, like, it's going to take time to actually put a system in place that where we truly have consistency across departments, across grade levels, across our entire system that really, you know, says, we do this on a regular basis and we're comfortable. That really, you know, says we do this on a regular basis and we're comfortable with it. So I don't see it as resistance. I see it more as like, you know, we've got to, you know, uh, change our practices and anytime um, you change something. It takes time, understanding, uh, patience and grace.
Right, people are sometimes resistant to change and and I just wanted to see how that would be. And we could come up with a better new, you know, better word for it, but just uh, just reluctant. Okay.
Student Board Member Chilton, then Trustee Howard, then Trustee Raymond.
Um, thank you, because I think standard based grading is really important, especially from a student's perspective. Um, there's a lot of pressure around students on grades. And I think it really affects our mental health. You know, some people aren't just, just aren't good test takers or. Um, socioeconomic can, status can affect people's test grades or sometimes they just have a bad day. And having the room to take a reassessment is really important. And something that I really liked that you highlighted was the difference between a redo and a reassessment because. Standard based grading is important because. If you get a bad grade on a test, like in all of my classes that are standard based grading, my teacher doesn't just hand me another test and say, try again. I have the option to relearn it and it's really, really helpful. Sometimes I finish a test and literally immediately after I learn what I did wrong. Um, but I think having that time to relearn that and not just redo it, but be reassessed on our knowledge is really, really helpful. And I would just say what I've noticed most is the challenge for students about standard based grading is inconsistency. In how teachers apply it. So I think if um, the teachers were able to. Like apply it in the same way it would work because it's hard to learn. How to take tests for different types of teaching, especially if it's all under the umbrella of standard based grading, but. Yeah, it's really helpful and um, I hope we continue with.
So thanks for the report and the plan sounds really good. And uh, this is the most important thing we've done in my time in Castro Valley, but it is. As we all know, it's quite revolutionary. It's really hard on teachers and administrators and students and parents as well. But you know, the one thing that I didn't see in this, and I think this is the same thing that I asked last year, maybe of Jason. I didn't see a timeline for completion on this in there. I saw a plan for this year and a plan for next year. When do we think we'll get this fully implemented?
So, so I think first of all, three years ago, um, we changed our board policy. Our board policy already says real clearly or AR. That we need to do retakes and redos and we need to take all of the non-standards based out. The problem is that I don't think people actually paid a lot of attention to it. And I'll be honest, the first thing we have to do, we actually have the board policy already. There is some tweaking that needs to be done about zero to four and and some other things. But basically our board policy you approved three years ago and it was because you want it aligned with our equity focus and our strategic mind. So we already have a policy, we just have to implement it and we have to do it right. We may have to do a few tweaks maybe next year. Uh, but the policy is already there because I remember saying, well, when are we going to bring the policy back? And then when we look, we're like, we actually have it. Um, so and and I'm uh, I would agree with you that. We've got to get to a point where, okay, we've talked about this for two, three years. But I think really this year we need to finish, like we need to be done with retakes and redos. Because when you listen and when you read and when you understand what this is about, it is. Illogical, immoral and mathematically incorrect if we keep doing what we've been doing. And it's not fair to kids.
I just want to, well, thank you for that. I appreciate that because, you know, it is the right thing to do and we all agree on that and. You know, so I'm glad to hear that there's a, a, some sense of urgency behind it so that our students can benefit from this sooner rather than later. So thank you. I know it's really hard though, so I do appreciate all your work. I don't mean to make light of that in any way. Just want to, can we move along with it?
Well, and Indiana's point was a very important point. Because I'm a student, I'm in Effie Sue's class in, uh, you know, teacher A, B, C, D. And if everybody is doing it differently, then I don't know what I'm expected to to know. Right? So that consistency is really important and we have heard that from many of our kids that we actually had have our on our, on our advisory committee. But I'm seeing more and more consistency and that's the kind of work they're doing. To make sure that people, first of all, everyone knows what our board policy is. Second of all, what are some, I mean, retakes and redos? And then the taking the other things that really don't have to do with your learning. You're out, you need to be able to make it up. And um, so I I think we're on the right track and I really want to, I want to thank you for, for pushing and for working really hard. And when you talk about resistors or people who are reluctant, it comes, it's about what I'm used to already. Um, and but once they actually do what Effie just explained and once they get good at it, you just can't go back. Um, I want to say a couple of things. So in some other districts, one near us, they did a lot of work. Well, I'm not sure if they actually worked with Joe Feldman like for as, as we have.
They were about to.
They were about to, so they kind of did it the other way. For us, the policy was already done because you're always like ahead of the game. But they've done a lot of work with Joe Feldman, who is just, who makes so much sense, his work and and the way they describe it. And what happened is they actually changed their board policy and they took it back. They took it back because the community didn't understand it. And frankly, the pushback actually was from people who usually get really good grades. Because they have resources and they have all of that. So they were like, well, that just means that. Now somebody else is going to get an A two and they're going to get another chance. So that's why we're not, this is a very different place and I I really want to thank you for all the work you've been doing and the kind of work our teachers have. Been doing because it's about fairness. It's about, do you know the standards or not? And when I, I used to hear, I'm preparing them for the real work. No, you're not. That is not what real work looks like today. Real work looks like. You've got a problem, look at fifteen different ways of doing it, keep trying, keep trying until you get it right. Right? Those of you who work in other industries, so we're very lucky, but I was really disappointed to see what happened in that district.
So, um, I guess just kind of like tack on to this conversation about how do we make sure or how, or what do we do to like kind of combat this? I I guess reluctance, is that a way to say it? Or misconception over what this is all about. It does seem. Uh, in some of the comments I've heard, um, parents make and also honestly just, you know. In in attending back to school night as a parent, you know, some of the comments I've heard from teachers also is that there. Does seem to be like a misperception over what this is all about. Um, and. I I mean, I do, I do strongly believe that, you know, obviously the work is being done to, you know, educate. Um, and and help people understand what what this really is all about, but there is some. You know, tone to that conversation of like, are we just giving our kids like endless passes to like keep trying or or to. You you know, what what is, is there, is there like, do they not have done any justification to 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 do it again and? Uh, but I do think that this distinction between just like retaking versus reassessing is really important. And in terms of messaging to the community, perhaps that's something that we want to try focusing on. Um, because I think if we change the language from. This is, you're just going to get to do it again versus, no, you're going to take a moment to relearn it. Um, it it makes a big difference and I've, I've seen that Indiana, you mentioned your own experience as a student because I've seen it happen to my own child. You know, and 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 his own experience of doing a reassessment and having to relearn before taking and then he was like. I really didn't understand it and now I do, you know, and this is a child who previously wasn't going to do that and wasn't going to take the time. So obviously this works, you know, obviously this is the right thing we should be doing. And I I a hundred percent stand behind it, you know, and and support all the work that you're doing. And as a point of personal privilege, I just want to say it's really nice to see Effie Sue. Um, who we never got to have as a teacher, but my parents knew her well and sang with her in a choir and when we moved here, when my son was two. My mom was like, I hope you get Effie Sue at Canyon in like thirteen years. So um, anyway, I just want, it was nice to see you here today. I'll have to say hi to my dad for you.
And I think the key here, what lots of, what's lots of you have been bringing up is, is this, we're talking about building the systems. To make sure that this is successful, right? It's not just about I redo, redo, redo. There's an opportunity, teachers are having to plan when it happens. What are the essential skills? What are the essential standards that we're really zeroing in on? Like we shared, they've done hard work on making sure. They know exactly what standards each and everything that they're teaching and then what they're assessing. And then in between, like if a student doesn't do well on something like, how are we reteaching that? How are we giving them opportunities to relearn before they reassess? That is what we're talking about when we're saying putting a system in place in order to do the work well. Otherwise it is just like free for all and just do what you will, but that's not going to be successful either. So we really do have to support our teachers, support our principals to put systems in place in order to do the work well. Part of that is the work with Joe Feldman's crescendo group about coaching because I can learn, I can read, I can try out some things. Coaching of side by side coaching helps tremendously. Like I tried this, it went really well. Or I tried this and oh my God, it went terribly. What should I do next? And that's kind of coaching piece really helps us along like, okay, let me try it now with this tweak. And maybe that'll work a little bit better. So we are talking about systems putting into place, structures and systems that will actually help us to do the work more seamlessly.
I just, and there's one additional question. So you had given us the site redo and retake feedback form for twenty twenty three. So, so this has already been, like this, this information has already been collected at school sites?
Every school site by the end of, by the end of this month.
Okay.
We'll have, we will have collected that data from every one of the schools.
And 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 is the goal to have like a uniform standard across all of our sites? Or does data support having different standards in different sites?
Different sta, so, so here's what I would say, conversation that I had with Mr. Fortenberry today. They are looking at, so the way that the math department, let's say at Canyon is trying to be consistent across. But that math department might do it indeed a bit differently than the social studies. Because there's diff, there's different ways of doing the, 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 the content that we're talking about. So. Um, I know when I was talking to Mr. Fortenberry, he was like, we're going to get really clear on like our different. Departments and the content area first before we go trying to go. School wide with one consistent practice across every single solitary content area. That would be challenging. So we're taking some steps to make, make sure that we can system, systematize the departments. And then get to school wide. And we're talking about, if you think about the high school, that's a big heavy load to. Kind of move forward. So we want to make sure that we're being practical about it, but we're also pushing. We are pushing.
Thank you.
Um, just one thing I wanted to add kind of in response to Ms. Amadi is that I feel like a lot of the reluctance around standard based grading. Is that it doesn't prepare kids for um, college or careers, but I think it does the opposite because. Um, students are able to hold themselves accountable. Like if you don't want to retake a test, you don't have to. But if you do, um, you're responsible for relearning it and you're responsible for asking for help. And I think that's really essential, especially um, if you don't learn the content the first time you're taught it. You can't apply it in your college or career. So um, the old way of grading doesn't really help us that much either. And I think that's really important. And then also just looking at this list of questions. Um, the first one is what circumstances would justify a retake and I think that it should be whatever the student decides because. In a lot of classes, it's like, oh, you get one retake a semester if you scored seventy percent or lower, but you can only score up to seventy percent. Um, and I think that's really challenging for students because everyone holds themselves to a different standard. Um, and we're kind of putting a cap on students by doing that. Um, but standard based grading takes that away.
That's why we need student voice, ongoing student voice, which we will continue to check in with our students.
And it looks different in secondary versus elementary. Like in elementary, we're going to make it mandatory because they're not sophisticated enough to say, oh, I need to redo this or retake it or reassess it because it makes a. Because it makes a difference, right? They don't really get that. Um, I think one really important piece that that you touched upon and then so did uh, you Board Member Raymond. Is that it shouldn't just be about reassessing, like you'll see the questions in there are deliberately set up. So that folks have to think about what's going to happen in order to, you know, be before a student retakes it or gets reassessed. Because it can't just be, oh, okay, here, next week you get to do it. Something has to be retaught. There has to be some, some step in between. So the questions are set up to really have folks think about what their role is, the teacher's role is in this, in this whole process. And one other thing I want to add is that what we're finding is a lot, and this, uh, someone said this, might have been Effie, that. There are a lot of teachers already doing this. They're like, but are we doing it right? Are we doing it Feldman's way? Like, so they're, they're doing it, they're just not sure if it's right. And so part of it is to have them really understand what it is. What it looks like in English versus what it looks like in in history. And to um, systematize it. That's the big goal of this year. So that in math, there's not one teacher saying one thing and a different one in the same integrated one saying something different.
I always have the last word, but I I would love to say a couple of things. Um, we're here to educate kids and we all know that knowledge is power. And what what we're really doing here is we have an inequitable system that our society is teaching us. Over and over, which is othering people because they have different barriers. And this is what it does is creating a new system and it takes time because we have to unlearn our biases. We have to unlearn what it's like to look at non-academic factors. And so taking those out and being really mindful so that we all get on the same page of, let's really be thinking about. How do we create the new system in a way that people understand? They can get behind and that we can make it something that's consistent across for equitability because that's the whole purpose is to be equitable in a new system. So I want to thank you all for your work that you're doing on this, for the staff, the teachers, for the community who is contributing. Our kids, I mean, when I look at it in the corporate world, when I hire an employee, I don't hire an employee because of their grades. I am, I hire an employee because of what they know, how they interview. And when they become an employee in the corporate world or even in the federal world, we know that adult learners learn by retaking. So like when you take a corporate training, you still have to pass by a certain amount, but you're allowed to take it over multiple times because we don't even care. That you have to retake it. We care that you understand the information so you don't hurt yourself or release stuff into the environment or. Ruin our ability to do our jobs. So again. We're breaking down a system to create a new one and that is going to be hard and we're going to face resistance because it just feels different. So thank you for everything that you're doing. I can't wait to see what this new system looks like. Thank you.
I just want to add that how we try to cast the net really wide. We also incorporated retakes and redos in one of our memorandums of understanding with CBT this year. So to uh, Board Member Howard's point about the timeline, we have to really see what other avenues we can add this part to other parts of. All the education system work. So this was another step. Uh, leading uh, Super Richard Amadi's belief and how, why can we cast this net? So this is one of the areas we also incorporated this year as well.
That's great. Thank you so much, Dr. Zamora. And thank you, team. We will now move on to uh, the facility use fee increase for calendar year twenty four, twenty six. Assistant Superintendent Jan.
It's, uh, we have tonight, uh, Aaron Ack.
Yes, uh, we have tonight, uh, Erin Ackerman, the Director of um, Maintenance Operations and Transportation, who will go over the presentation tonight and answer questions.
Thank you. You know, I had this really dramatic entrance planned, but since there's nobody here, I'll save it for next time. Uh, so before I start, I would just like to say, President Whitaker, I'm equally intrigued by the zero emissions program at ROP. I think we need to get one of those people over here for our new buses that we're getting. All right. So I'll keep it short and sweet tonight, and I know everybody wants to go home. So we'll, we'll go through this pretty quickly. Um, I will not read your own board policy to you. I'm assuming that you are familiar with Board Policy thirteen thirty. Um, so this just sets the framework for how we rent our facilities. Our school campuses and our facilities are really kind of like community centers. We don't have a lot of parks in Castro Valley, so they're really vital for the, the community of Castro Valley to be able to have places to gather and participate in community activities. Uh, and then uh, it also touches on how we uh, collect fees for renting those facilities to make sure that we're able to continue to take care of those facilities and uh, have them available for both our students during the school day as well as after school activities. And the board policy really um, comes from the Civic Center Act, which sets the framework for how we go about uh, making these facilities available and how we are able to collect fees. And in twenty twelve, Senate Bill fourteen forty uh, established some um, methods of how we collect fees and, and how we are able to recoup the costs to keep our facilities in good working condition. So this, this slide touches on, um, you know, how we create these facilities in the first place and how we maintain them. So um, we get bonds like Measure G and we create these wonderful facilities for our students and our community. And then the upkeep of those facilities, uh, the money from that comes from the general fund. Uh, so it's really important that we're able to recoup the costs uh, that come out of the general fund so that we have that money available for our students uh, and our facilities. And so to figure out how best to recoup those costs, we look um, at cost recovery analysis. We partnered um, with Facilitron who helps us run our rental of our facilities to help us figure out exactly um, where uh, we should be at when it comes to what we're charging for our facilities so that it's fair for the community, but we're also getting that money back so that we can continue to take good care of our facilities. Uh, so this just touches on the framework um, of, of how to determine uh, what we should be charging, making sure that we're being fair, making sure that we get that money back to be able to, to take care of those facilities. And so this um, just talks about some of the things that go into that analysis. So it's everything from staffing to open and close and clean up, uh, the supplies that it takes to stock the restrooms, um, the administrative and secretarial time that it takes to organize all the rentals. Uh, we have a fantastic department specialist that handles all of our facility rentals. Uh, she works with all the community groups uh, and the school sites to make sure that we're able to offer our facilities to all the groups that uh, that utilize them. Um, and then it also uh, incorporates capital cost and looks at the replacement costs for uh, for all our facilities to make sure that we're able to put that money uh, in a place that when it's time to replace a basketball court or a field or something like that, we have that money uh, in place to be able to do that. So now we'll move on to um, looking at the total hours by category. Uh, so our district expanded groups, um, those are our PTAs. Um, our groups, uh, Science Olympiad, uh, a lot of the groups uh, that are very closely tied to the district, uh, they're, they're doing a lot of work to support our students. It's our students uh, that are participating like right after school uh, in a lot of these activities. And so uh, those groups are able to rent our facilities um, at no cost. Uh, so you can see uh, three thousand two hundred and ninety-six hours uh, last fiscal year uh, was rented out by those district expanded groups. Um, and then uh, the next category is our nonprofit um, youth league. So this is um, the local soccer uh, clubs, um, baseball, all the, the local sports groups, um, any of the groups uh, in the community that uh, that use our facilities but aren't directly tied to the district. Um, and we use uh, it's called direct cost. We're just charging them what it costs us to actually operate the facilities. Um, so as you can see, that's a significant amount, uh, twenty thousand one hundred and fifty-two hours. And when you consider there are less than six thousand non-school day hours in a year, that's a significant amount of use uh, that our facilities are getting by these groups. Um, and then um, for profit groups, we don't have a whole lot, uh, but we do have a few. These are, you know, people running a math club or um, some sort of uh, camp trying to still provide services for kids, but they're making money off of it. Uh, so we're able to charge them a little bit more on what's called fair market uh, for those groups. So I included the high school in this picture of our most rented facility type because it is by far our most rented facility. Uh, the stadium, the gym, uh, the CFA, they are rented constantly. It, it is uh, a very, very busy campus, uh, both during and after school over there. So um, you can see on the left, we've got the different facility types, the total hours rented, and then uh, the charges that uh, we were able to recoup for, for those spaces. And then if we look at this chart, um, it's, it's broken down. So the childcare lease, um, that's adventure time, kids care, prime time, um, all those YMCA, all those groups um, that use our facilities um, as after school programs. You know, they come and use our playgrounds, they use our gyms. Uh, so they're, they're very uh, good partners. They're, they're taking care of the kids after school. Uh, but as you can see, they, they don't make up nearly uh, as big of a piece of that pie as the renters. Uh, so that's, it's a much bigger slice over there at seventy-two percent uh, coming from the renters. So now we move on to the uh, proposed fee increases. So on the left, uh, we have all of our different facilities that we rent out. That first column is the current direct cost. So that is um, we're charging them what it costs us to run the facility. So after running this analysis, um, uh, the second column is um, what was determined to be our real direct cost. Um, so as you can see, we're a, a little bit low in that first column compared to the calculated direct cost. And so using that, we've come up with the proposed uh, fee increases. Um, effective uh, January first for the first increase, July first, twenty twenty-four for the second, and then the final increase, July first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, and then on the right, you can see the, the current fair market prices as well with those same stepped increases moving forward. Any questions?
Trustee Howard?
On that last slide, I see two groups cost, but I didn't see the nonprofit cost. Did I miss it?
Uh, so the, the nonprofit is the uh, direct cost. So the district expanded groups, um, we don't charge them.
Okay.
The, the nonprofits are the direct cost, and then it's the fair market.
Thank you.
Trustee Raymond?
Okay, thanks. Um. So I just have one question, and I don't know if it's within the scope of this conversation tonight. Um, but I, you know, I'm, I'm reading the slides and listening to the, to, to what we're talking about in terms of like who we rent to. And one of the questions I have or that this brings to my mind is, um, you know, what is our I don't know, policy is the right word, or do we have a rule or requirement um, regarding renting our facilities to organizations that don't actually abide to our strategic directions or match our commitment to equity principles? And I'm thinking in particular about churches that preach, um, you know, anti LGBTQ rhetoric, um, that sort of thing. Um, and I also do realize that, you know, we are a public, uh, public buildings. Um, but I, we do have, you know, a set of strategic directions that are very important to us that we hold dear as, as a district. And um, how does that align with the way we offer our space?
So Civic Center Act, we, we don't get to choose who we give it to, especially when it comes to those things. We did put something in our policy because we had a couple of issues before with signage um, at like games. So we put something in there that says no hate speech, this and that cannot be displayed on any of their things. But basically, we can't, we would, we can't decide based on even our strategic plan that somebody, I mean, we rent to so many people, right? We, almost every Sunday, our buildings are rented out to churches, different groups, synagogue. I mean, it's, so it would be a, a very, um, I don't think, not don't think so, we can't do that because we're basically then, we're a public entity. Now, we can say you can't have that kind of sign because it was something that we don't believe in. And we put that in our policy just recently, like a year and a half ago.
Trustee Adams?
Oh, um, so for like, um, you know, the kids playing baseball and that sort of thing in their leagues, uh, are, uh, do they have enough lead time from now to January to um, since it's going to cost them more to use the fields? Do they have enough time to then maybe up the fees that they have for their, their uh, athletes to participate?
Um, so um, that's a good question. And so there's a reason why we did, uh, we're recommending that we do this in three, um, you know, over the next year and a half. And that's, um, so if you look at January first, the proposal is really just a five percent increase. Um, and um, we, we did have conversations with some of our um, sports groups. And that really, our sports groups are the ones that are, are utilizing our facilities. And we did give them a heads up that this is coming. And actually, it was really last year. And so it took a little bit of time to kind of do all the calculation and everything. And so, so we did share with, with, with some, some of them, but not all. Um, and that's the reason why we decided it's uh, um, since January first is coming up, it's a five percent. It's a small increase. And then um, uh, leading up to January first, twenty-four, and then finally in twenty-five, which is really the full, um, looking at the calculated direct cost.
Okay, so like five percent and okay. Yeah, that, that sounds good. It's nice that you were able to talk to some of them.
Yeah, and, and they charge for these programs. And when we were talking to Howard, if you remember when we had our conversation, they, other entities charge a whole heck of a lot more, so we need to, we really needed to. And, and I mean, it's one dollar more. Um, so yeah, it should be good.
Um, and then are like school athletic teams, is that part of the district expanded groups? Okay, so then like outside, like non-school athletic teams, okay.
Yeah, so any school activities get priority over any outside users. So if the high school teams are using the stadium up until ten o'clock, there's not going to be any renters for that day.
No, I also just want to ask, and I don't know when the date was, but we haven't updated our fees in very many years.
Since twenty sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah. And so if we're talking about inflation, we're talking about, you know, our expenses, you know, going up and what that looks like, we're really, you know, catching up um, to be able to cover our costs. And so I really appreciate you assessing this. I really appreciate you giving people heads up. And I love the phased approach, um, because that way, you know, we can tier it up where we need to be.
And this is an action item.
I move that we approve the, what's called the facility use fee increase for calendar year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six.
I'll second it.
Then moved in second, is there further discussion?
Does this include the CFA fees? I mean, our action now, is it going to include fees for the CFA being increased? Cause they, I didn't see them on there unless I missed.
No, this is not, this is just for, yes, that is a separate um, item that uh, we will have a separate presentation about that because it's um, the way it's structured is very different than uh, the rest of the facilities, that's the way.
Thanks for that clarification.
Student Board Member Chilton? Yes. Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Thank you so much. We will now move on to item eleven G. Uh, Dr. Zamora?
It's just our personnel report. One thing I'd like to mention is that Chloe Billings, she's the music teacher, and she is a product of Castro Valley Public Schools, and now she's back here teaching, so it is possible.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of the personnel report.
I'll second.
It's been moved in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes four zero. We will now move on to item eleven H, approved variable term waiver twenty-three, twenty-four for Jimena. I wrote all over my page, Zucchini Shanak, grade one dual immersion Spanish teacher.
Ms. Shanak is fluent in Spanish. CTC requires to have a Spanish bilingual authorization, so we're coming to the board for a waiver for that while she completes the program.
Thank you so much. And this is an action item.
I, I move that we uh, approve the uh, variable term waiver for Jimena Shanak.
I will second.
It's been moved in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the motion passes four zero. We will now move on to item eleven I, which is similar, but for Nicole Rodriguez, kindergarten for the dual immersion Spanish.
And it belongs the same lines. She speaks fluent in Spanish. We just need to have authorization, so she's going through the program as well. And so she'll have this year to complete it, and she's enrolled.
Thank you.
I'll move that we approve the variable term waiver for Nicole Rodriguez.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
And I will say yes. So the motion passes four to zero. We will now move on to board member comments and reports. Trustee Howard, what have you been up to?
Uh, a lot of things, actually. Uh, of course, several of us were at the ribbon cutting for the medical clinic at the high school. That's a terrific event. Um, I was also at the uh, uh, DLI meeting, the language immersion meeting uh, last week, uh, at least for part of it because I had to leave there to go to the Palomar's Parent Club with Parveen. Um, and you know, at, at that, we had actually apropos for this evening, we had actually a pretty good discussion that night about grading and homework. And actually, one of the better discussions that I think we've ever had at a parent club. So that was really very nice. Uh, it was also with uh, Lavender at the uh, Community Ambassadors when we visited ROP. And in fact, I've been at a lot of ROP things. Uh, ROP had a breakfast for their business partners uh, that was really good, attended by probably, yikes, I don't know, a hundred and fifty people or something. Um, it's really terrific. They gave a number of awards. We gave one to uh, the um, uh, tech company that supports our uh, our students here. I forgot the name of it now, and I should know it. It was birthed out of Gladstone. I should, I know all the founders. At any rate, that was really good to see that. And I did attend the ROP board meeting last week. Terrific meeting. As you could see from what Blaine said tonight, it's going very well. Also was able to hear Lizard Tega twice in the last week or two, uh, once at a breakfast with some of the rest of us, I think, uh, a week or so ago, and then yesterday, uh, yeah, yesterday at Rotary. So I'm glad to see her. She's working really hard, I think, and really getting out in the communities. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Howard? Trustee Raymond, what have you been up to?
Oh, what have I been up to? Um, I got to attend the Um I got to attend the Vanoye Parent Club meeting this last week, last week or this week. Um and CDHS last night, um it's always, I always love seeing what's happening at the schools. So it was a nice, nice peak, especially back in Vanoye because I haven't been on campus in a really long time. Um I also attended the ribbon cutting yesterday. Um and as I shared with the CDHS parents last night, um one thing that really struck me, when you walk in the door, the first thing you see right on the side of the wall there is a dispenser full of period of products, free for the taking, no judgment, no questions, just get what you need. And I think that probably, I hope that that's what's going to sum up um our kids and our communities' experiences with this partnership. Walk in, get what you need, no judgment. You know, and I just think that's so refreshing in this day and age that's so full of judgment. Um it's nice to see a place that is lacking in that. Um I attended the Masters in Governance course uh this past weekend on school finance. Um uh learned a lot, have lots of questions. You know, some of you may be hearing from me. Um the Little Mermaid starts this week. I've got my tickets for Friday night. Um I will just say as a parent, these kids, you guys have no idea how hard they're working. They have been at school nonstop between attending their classes and working on this show, including the weekends for the last two weeks. They have been, they are, they are really, they're putting their heart, soul, everything into it. So I'm, as a parent, I'm super excited to have a child who finally is like, sure, I'll be involved in something you like, mom. Um but it's just also really remarkable just to see those kids all coming together to do this. So um you know, get a ticket and go out and support them. Um this coming weekend, I'll be attending the Alameda County Democratic Party's um Unity Dinner. Uh as a guest of Liz Ortega, her team, and I'm looking forward to uh just reconnecting with everybody there. Um and that's, I think that's all I got. Thanks.
So trustee Raymond, I do have to ask, are your fingernails school spirit?
Not intentionally. I was, I painted them yellow. And after I painted them, I'm like, wow, that is like CDHS yellow, but I didn't really notice it until I then went and I took what I thought was just a blue glitter to put on top of the yellow, but it actually turned them CVH green. So I thought, you know, I'm going to CDHS this week. I'll just leave it, so.
I was like, go school spirit.
Well, you know, I had a lot of CDHS like stuff to do this week, um you know. And I'm like, you know, I'll just leave it. It's good. I didn't have a lot of time to do it again anyway, and you know, go Trojans, right?
Yep, exactly. Thank you. Trustee Adams, what have you been up to?
Uh so I attended the uh CEFA meeting. And that is the um the uh group of um that has a board member and a special ed director from Castro Valley, San Leandro, San Lorenzo, and Hayward. Uh we saw a presentation from Pam Maisy, the new director of the CEFA. Uh the second thing I attended was the PAC. Uh and that is the group of special ed parents. Um we heard um a lot from Stacy Illard, our new uh director of special ed. Um the thing I got from her the most on that is of, of course, we want equity, we want inclusion. Inclusion is a very important thing in special ed. But she said, besides that, we really want to have our kids feel empowered. So that is uh one of the things she's really working on. And uh like other folks here, I was able to attend the opening of the healthcare center at Castro Valley High, and I was greatly impressed. And one of the reasons I was impressed is I saw knowing that we were going to have a healthcare center, I went and made sure I visited the one at the high school I work at. And uh the center that we have is amazingly much more well uh made. I mean, there are the the rooms where uh students are going to be able to see a healthcare provider look like the kind of rooms when you go to your doctor. Um that that's not the case for all of these centers. For some of them, it's a double wide trailer and there's a desk, and then there's just some like movable walls. And that's, that's what they've got. So um and then tonight, I should be also at the Castro Valley Education Foundation meeting. Parveen and I should be there, except we couldn't be. They had to move their meeting, but we couldn't be there and be here at the same time. So we'll have to catch up to them next month and see what they're doing.
Thank you, trustee Adams. And for myself, I was lucky enough to go with trustee Howard and superintendent Parveen to ROP to see superintendent Torpe. Great, we even got to try the cookies that they made. It was very delicious.
Um I was very impressed by a couple of the rooms, um the firefighting room. Really cool stuff that you get to train and be um emergency responders. I mean, to get that opportunity, I mean, it's a great career, great pension. So it was really great to be there. And then I was also at the ribbon cutting um with all of you. And that was really great to to see that and see that we're going to be creating equitable access to healthcare um in our community, which is greatly needed. And with that, I thank you all for your perspectives, your comments, your questions, and for everything that our district does to support our students. And I wish you all a good night.